All right, I now open the regular city council meeting for Lubbock City Council for November 5th, 2024. The city council will now recess into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code Number 551.071 to consult with and seek the advice of the city's legal counsel, 551.072 to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, and 551.074 to discuss personnel matters. The city council is now recessing at 12:35 PM. Yeah, I think this one is closer to this one. Hello, everybody. Our city council is now reconvening in open session at 2:11 PM, and we're going to conduct a work session at this time, and I'm going to call on Chris Mandrell to come forward and give us a presentation on City Bus. Thank you, Chris.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Probably for your benefit, I'm not going to be the one presenting to you today. I'm going to turn it over to Jason Miller. He is with Farr and Pierce Consulting. He's a consultant group that we've been working with over the last several years to take us through the five-year plan that they've developed. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Jason Miller to take you through it.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Thank you, Mayor, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to present to you today. So as Chris mentioned, this has been many years in the making. There was a transit master plan, a five-year plan developed in 2019, finalized in 2019, and then not adopted at that point because right on the, right ahead of COVID and the pandemic. So that's given us a great opportunity, though, in recent years, this project we started in 2023, to really understand the post-COVID travel patterns and develop and base a lot of the work that we did in that 2017 through 19 era, but update it based on current conditions. So this plan largely is needed to modernize City Bus. It's been really decades since City Bus has been retooled and rethought through, and that's what this plan does. It improves service where it's needed the most. It responds to recent land use patterns and changes that have happened within Lubbock. It adjusts microtransit. Microtransit, or City Bus on demand, was implemented in response to COVID. It was in our 2019 plan. City Bus moved quickly to implement it. We want to retool that, though, and make adjustments to that. All of the plan is based around growing ridership, improvements to the service overall, really taking fixed route and having it be a much more important part of the service, kind of like it was before, and serve some of those new destinations. The approach we've taken here has been based on understanding those current conditions today through data, as well as public outreach, and really trying to understand where the demand is and where the needs are and how the current system can be adopted through this five-year plan, adapted through this five-year plan to be more effective and build ridership. Within this plan, we reduce reliance on the downtown transfer center. The old system or the current system that is really legacy at this point is based on all routes pulsing out of the downtown transfer center. We want to update that, introduce smaller distributed mobility hubs, connection points in points throughout town, still using the downtown transfer plaza as a major connection point, but just not as much focus as it has today. As I mentioned, retool microtransit to work with fixed route and not against. Our studies showed that there was really a duplication in the way microtransit is operated today and the way fixed route is operated, and really make those fixed route operate better. They are a more efficient from a cost standpoint overall, and certainly listening to the community and riders throughout this process. So this is just a look at our entire plan together. I'll break this down into its various components. But overall, fixed route service is increased. New connections are made, especially to the south, southwest, and north, with new areas served as a result. We also have new routes. So we retooled existing routes in many cases, but we also are introducing entirely new routes as well. And we're pulling back microtransit to really provide more localized, shorter-distance trips in areas throughout town in the shaded zones that you see, as opposed to a citywide footprint that microtransit has today. In looking at just the fixed route service, I mentioned some of those new connections, one far to the south there to the HEB along a new route along Quaker. We also have a new express route that utilizes Marsha Sharp to make efficient connections from the center of Lubbock to the southwest. But we have basically a new hierarchy of routes where we have express routes making fast connections between key points. We have core routes making frequent connections throughout the day, and then we have more localized routes. So we are today, City Bus is operating the same frequency on all the routes. What we're recommending in this service plan is more tiered service that appropriately matches demand and makes City Bus operate more efficiently overall. Thirty minutes is the goal frequency on many of our routes, running every thirty minutes with those direct east-west connections, north-north-east connections, south-and-southwest connections. I mentioned the microtransit zones. This shows all of the microtransit zones. You can travel any two points within these zones, and they're really designed to provide that localized travel, but more importantly, connect from these zones to fixed route services with fixed route making longer-distance trips across all of Lubbock. The paratransit zone is pulled back. It's more similar to 2019 as a result of pulling back microtransit. So this provides some efficiencies within the overall system, but is that three-quarters of a mile surrounding all of the route. So you can have that paratransit, which is required under the Americans with Disabilities Act. You can get that service in this zone that you see here. We are recommending that what existed prior to COVID in 2019 was a citywide zone, an extended zone. That is still part of the plan, but would come with a different pricing structure. In both microtransit and paratransit, we do have a recommendation to move to opt-in trips for those who are able and interested to Uber and Lyft. There are significant cost savings associated with that. When it comes to implementation, we're looking to balance the existing resources within our goal scenario. But the balancing of fixed route hours compared to on-demand and paratransit combined, which is band service collectively between on-demand and paratransit, it used to be in the 70-40 range pre-COVID and has kind of inverted more recently. And so we're trying to reestablish that with a higher investment in fixed route and a more similar investment in paratransit to what existed pre-COVID, and maintaining that on-demand service, but at a more reasonable level. We envision implementing this over time. This will be, from a route structure standpoint, implemented at a single point in time, but it will be improved upon over the five years of our plan. We do have many supporting recommendations here. With a new structure, a new refresh to the whole system, we think it could be an opportunity for rebranding, investing in more marketing and outreach, and then continuous improvement over time to help understand and utilize technology as much as possible. Lots of different pre-launch activities that would come ahead and likely in the next six months to twelve months to really get ready for this implementation. With that, we'll take questions.
Do you want to have any questions? I had one, if you want. If you can go back to your map. I'm just thinking with, once the La Prino plant is completed on 19th Street outside the Loop, is there going to be a route that would connect to that? Any consideration given to that?
Yeah, I think one thing to mention is that this plan started in January of '23. Lubbock is a very dynamic place with a lot of change going on. So we want to be adaptive to that. We do have, as part of our contract with City Bus, implementation activities. So those kind of on-the-ground changes that we may need to consider as a result of some of those development changes are things we're going to be responsive to.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm not seeing my...
And I don't, Chris, if you want to...
There. Mr. Wishi.
I overspeak. Please cut me off if I need to.
Good afternoon. Can you tell us, what is the projected impact on City Bus's operating budget after fully implementing your recommendations?
Full implementation, if we were to get to our stretch scenario, for example, this is an investment of about $500,000 to $600,000 more to get to that full implementation. To get to our initial implementation, we are balancing the resources that exist for City Bus today. One thing to note, though, is that costs have gone up significantly like in many businesses, and that's a factor that needs to just be refined in here. I think it's about 30% overall cost increases across the board over the past few years for City Bus. So we need to reconcile that. But our goal for the initial implementation of this plan has always been able, been to be neutral from a resource standpoint.
And you say that the full implementation would be about a $500,000 to $600,000 investment. I use the word "investment." It's not an investment in the sense that we're purchasing some new facility or equipment, but that would actually be a recurring annual operating deficit, correct?
Annual investment. That's correct.
Okay. But not investment in the sense that we're purchasing something tangible, just a budget obligation, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's an investment in transportation for the community.
What's the net cost per passenger for City Bus currently?
The net cost, it breaks down differently by service. Cost per passenger for fixed route service in total, including the Texas Tech routes, is about $5 per passenger. That is, my understanding of that is total and not net of any fare revenue.
Correct.
So fare revenue is netted off of that. I don't have that number for you offhand. And then on the on-demand and paratransit side is $36, $37? $37 per passenger cost.
What are...
And that's per boarding, I should say, is an easier way to think about it.
Okay. What's your projection for the cost of per passenger that's integrated into the new microtransit network?
The cost per passenger could stay the same. It's that we, what we anticipate is that a shift from microtransit to fixed route would occur just by the way that we're retooling the service. So you would have more people taking fixed route, less taking microtransit. It's likely the cost per passenger might stay close to the same, because that's averaged by the amount of service. So it likely stays the same, but you're moving more people through a lower-cost option when we move to fixed route.
And you say it's likely that it might stay the same. Is that something that y'all have specifically modeled under a set of assumptions, or is that more of like a hunch expectation?
Well, we've tracked the cost per rider and cost per hour over time. We know what it is today, and we know how the system should perform from a ridership standpoint, based on ridership modeling. So that's the modeling that we've done. We can't predict future costs. We do think that City Bus's current costs have stabilized in, you know, this year. They have seen that 30% increase in costs over the past three years. So it's hard to model like what inflation might do.
Is there a volume or a fare rate that would help City Bus be self-sufficient in its own operations?
Unlikely, because as you raise fares, you push away ridership. And that's essentially the elasticity associated with fare increases. The fare increases do push away ridership. So you likely, you know, could net more per passenger, but you're losing passengers. So that's a real challenge in public transit broadly.
Tell me about the way that City Bus operations are currently integrated with ride-sharing platforms like Uber and Lyft.
Chris could probably speak to that better than I could.
So for a cost-controlling, we don't typically utilize them. We will utilize them on special occasions, tax-free weekend, tri-transit day. Sometimes for elections and things, we'll use, partner with them to do overflow trips that we cannot provide. But we, for fiscal reasons, we don't utilize them because there's not a ceiling or a cap on what could be out there. And so we want to make sure we stay within the budget of our allowance. We try to only do those, or we do only do those for like special occasions.
And so in that situation, somebody, tell me how a passenger would get a ride through City Bus on a platform like Uber or Lyft?
Yeah, so it's all done through, it's very similar to an application on a phone or a desktop, as you would like an Uber or Lyft, right? So they would go through that. It's through City Bus or a vendor that we work with that they would book a trip exactly like you would on any other TNC platform. But the thing is, is if they're booking through our service, to be able to go off onto a Uber or Lyft or another TNC, they have to opt in, which means that they're basically accepting the terms and conditions. And the big one is that the driver of that other vehicle is not a drug and alcohol-tested driver. And so if they opt in or say, yes, we are okay with doing those rides on those instances, if we can't respond to a ride within 25 or 30 minutes, then it will automatically push that off to the TNC provider.
And so then if Uber, for example, charges 30 bucks for the trip, the passenger still has their fare capped at some rate set by City Bus?
That's correct.
And what ballpark quote would that be?
So today, we just run it to $2 fare on each ride. So if it were outsourced out, they would just pay their $2, and that's it.
Regardless of the length of trip or the costs incurred by City Bus?
That's correct.
And then under the new proposal, does that integration with the ride-sharing platforms change any?
It could. So in their plan, they have a fare model that they are suggesting that we can change to. There's a lot of different things you can do with fares to do that. There is the ability to, if within the zone, we only wanted to pay the first $5 of that trip, then we could push the rest of that cost off to the passenger for that. There's a lot of different models in that environment that you can get yourself into. And so that's something we do have, or they have gone through and kind of done some suggestions on fares, but at this point, we haven't like made those recommendations and set those in yet, specifically because we don't know exactly when and we're going to be potentially getting into a partnership with Uber and Lyft on a consistent basis. So we just don't have those finalized yet.
So within the microtransit zone, I've noticed that there are some main routes that run through the microtransit zone. Is there any limitation on where you can move within the microtransit zone? Like, for example, is it designed just to get you to the nearest main line, or how does that work?
Yeah, so just going back one question before I answer that one. The fares that we present in our five-year plan are, for the microtransit zone, are distance-based. So the fare increases for longer distances. Within the plan and the change to microtransit, you would be able to move within the smaller zones. Today, microtransit is citywide and in many ways duplicates fixed route connections. In the smaller zones, you could connect two points within the zone. At a higher fare, the lowest fare that you would have would be to connect to the fixed route hub point or a bus stop. So to get from anywhere in the zone to a bus stop would be the lowest fare. But you could move anywhere within that smaller zone. You wouldn't be able to move broadly across using micro, across town using microtransit.
And can we go back to the map of the microtransit zones? Because I know, for example, in some core areas of the city, for example, like this corridor along Quaker, it's not covered by a microtransit zone. Can you explain that and some of the reasoning behind the boundaries?
Yeah, I think it's resources. You know, the reason that we don't have all of these zones butting up against each other is because we were trying to get these to work well with fixed route and not necessarily cover all parts of town. So we're pretty sensitive to where we were losing a little bit of service within our existing coverage with routes, making sure that there was a zone in place for that, and then not introducing service where we didn't think there was a high need for demand. Because microtransit is the most expensive service that City Bus operates. So that was the thinking there. You could certainly think about all of these zones coming together and being adjacent and covering all of the same area that the updated fixed route system covers. It just comes at a cost.
And that's kind of my concern from a policy decision, that somebody who lives off of Indiana is going to have access to a microtransit zone, but somebody who lives inside the Loop off of Quaker won't. And people who are living very close to one another geographically are getting very different access to resources.
Yeah, that is a consideration.
Those are all the questions that I have for you right now. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask real quick. Remind me, what is the fare? It's still $2, right, currently?
That's correct, yeah.
That's correct.
But it, when was the last time that, it's been quite a while since y'all went up on fares, right?
Yeah, so back, I want to say, was early, is before my time, maybe 2010-ish timeframe. There was an increase in fare. And while it brought, did bring in more fare revenue, we actually lost passengers, probably 10%, 12% passenger reduction on that.
Well, being someone that has utilized this particular transit service, it is very appreciated what you do, and I thank you for that. Thank you for, you know, keeping it at a fair, you know, fee for individuals, families, working people, if you will. And I know there was a mention about how we've seen a lot of change, but Lubbock has also seen a lot of growth. And we need to call or answer to the call of growth, and I think you guys are doing that. And I appreciate that you're thinking about the La Prino. And also, I know that some of the folks from Goodwill are here, and they're working on a facility that will be in East Lubbock, that is going to give even more opportunity to our community and those that choose to ride the bus, because it is a very clean and good system, and I appreciate what you're doing.
Mr. Collins.
Thank you. Just a quick question. The creation of mobility hubs, will that require additional land, additional infrastructure to provide facilities for what I'm assuming is a place where you might have a longer wait?
Yeah, ideally, you know, a mobility hub would include, you know, shelter-covered waiting area, other amenities to provide comfort and safety to passengers. But to establish a connection point or a mobility hub really requires, you know, at a minimum curb space and some right-of-way to make that work, just so that multiple vehicles can connect. It's going to be strategic, or it's going to be opportunistic relative to these different sites, you know, whether that might be an agreement with, you know, private landowner to, you know, utilize perhaps an edge of a parking lot, for example. There's already some examples of that today. Or, you know, if, as resources allow, and there are some federal programs to establish mobility hubs, the acquisition and development of a property itself.
Has any of that process been thought through or started at this point?
Yeah, we had done a mobility hub study as part of a broader facility study in 2021 that identified some of those properties, just again, at a pretty high level. So no work in terms of like getting land or acquiring that.
Yeah, I think initially, it was, it's just more about having the curb line and maybe, you know, putting shelters and things at the curb line to make it, to improve it to be more than just a stop. I think that's kind of the initial thought behind this, is really to kind of stay really small and just improve that curb line for connections.
Well, again, thank you for both, for what you've done. We appreciate it.
Any further questions from the council? Thank you both. Appreciate it. All right, now, we'll go ahead and proceed with our city council meeting and with our ceremonial items. And today, we have Pastor Lloyd Zenega from Across the Way Baptist Church, who will come forward and lead us in our invocation, followed by Mayor Protem leading us in our pledges of allegiance. Would you please join us all in standing?
Thank you so much for allowing me to be here. Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. The people he has chosen has his own inheritance. Some trust in chariots and some in horses, but we trust in the name of the Lord, our God. Lord God, we thank you so much for this opportunity to be here today. God, I pray for mayor and council. And God, I pray that you would give them wisdom and discernment and big decisions, Lord, that need to be made. God, would you watch over them and protect them. God, would you be with each and every one, God, and their families. God, we thank you for the work that you have set before us. Lord, may we be found faithful in what you have called us to do. God, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy. God, we thank you for your love. And Lord, may you be honored and glorified. God, we ask and just say thank you and ask that you would continue to guide them and lead them. Lord, we pray, our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever and ever, in Jesus' name. Amen and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, under the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Pastor. Before we get started, just hope everybody's gone out and voted today. Just encourage you all, as we're sitting up here and pledging allegiance to our flag. I think all of us are glad we're not up for election today. And so, but that's important. And so I want to encourage everybody, if you're here or you're watching and you haven't voted yet, you still have time to go out and vote. What we do up here may seem rather mundane at times, but it's really a privilege. It's a privilege that we have as citizens of a constitutional republic. It's an incredible honor to serve, but it's also an incredible responsibility for our citizens to participate. So I want to encourage everybody to vote today. As we always do, we begin with citizen comments. So according to Lubbock City Council rules, any citizen wishing to appear in person before a regular meeting of the city council regarding any matter posted on the city council agenda shall complete the silent form provided at the meeting no later than 2:00 PM on November 5th, 2024. Citizen comments always provide an opportunity for our citizens to make comments and express a position on any agenda item. And I believe we have four citizens wanting to come forward today. And as I call you, if you'll come forward, state your name, your address, and what agenda item you wish to speak to. And beginning with this, Amanda McAfee, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Amanda McAfee with Lubbock Area United Way, am president and CEO, and I am at 5612 17th Street. So, Mr. Collins, I'm over in your area, just pointing that out. I just want to come, and it works well that we're coming right after the work session, because wanted to just share United Way's support for the expanded routes, as well as the microroutes. You guys have all heard us talk about ALICE. For those of you haven't, that stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. Forty-nine percent of our community, according to the last data, and we're talking about folks that have really good jobs in our community, but are still struggling to make ends meet. And we really see this as a workforce issue more than anything. So when we're talking about ALICE, majority of those folks are working in retail or accommodation and food services, healthcare, social assistance, educational services. And when we think about where those jobs are becoming available in Lubbock, they're in the southwest. And so if we're thinking about people being able to access... And so if we're thinking about people being able to access those jobs, they need to be able to get to work. Now, I understand, I grew up in Lubbock, we're a car town. I'm sorry, Chris, but he doesn't know I use the lines occasionally. We're a car town and I get that, but when the car goes out, how do I make sure I make it to work on time? That's the question, because for our folks in ALIS, they're making hard decisions about whether they're going to pay the rent or get the car fixed. If, and when if, we can see this backed up in our 211 data. If you're not familiar with 211, um, that is a service that you can call to reach out and get the support and the help that you need and get access to our services that are available in the community. So when we look at our 211 data for the last year, majority of the requests are around our highest budget items, rent, utilities, food. People are going to spend money on those things first. And then they show up at one of our agencies, they're going to ask for a bus pass, which City Bus very regularly provides many of our agencies with those bus passes. They're not going to call and ask for transportation, but it is a need that we do hear over and over again on our end, our service. And, um, my colleague, Robin Rainey at Goodwill, is going to talk to you guys in a minute and share some of what they see on a regular basis on that. We're very much in support, I think, also adding a line out to La Prino is a great idea as well as we consider this moving forward. But also pointing out, I think, as we look at that, 79424, 79423, and 791413 are the highest served zip codes by our community partners. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Now I'm going to call forward, Jason Potter. Mr. Potter?
All right, good afternoon, members of city council and fellow residents. Jason Potter, I am at 381566th Street, uh, in Councilman Rose's district there. I'm also a 20-year resident of Lubbock and I'm here today to express my support of the route redesign for City Bus. Over the past five years, I have served on the Public Transit Advisory Board, uh, most recently the past two years as the board chairman. During that time, I've been able to witness the development of this comprehensive, thoughtful, and strategic redesign plan. Our current design, while not completely useless in its current form, was designed for a city that's at best three-quarters of the size that it is now and designed for a different population than what it currently deserves, or what it currently serves. And as I'm sure you understand, we need to evolve along with our growing city. This new design makes improvements in three key areas, our footprint, our mobility, and our efficiency. Uh, this new design adds access to key areas in West and South Lubbock while maintaining service to areas with our highest ridership. Our mobility will be easily, uh, will ease, more easily connect areas within our city and our express routes and utilizing the main arteries of our road system. We'll also increase the efficiency in this, uh, in this design by use of transfer stations or the mobility hubs as we've previously designed, or at least illustrated. And also utilizing proven systems like microtransit that have shown successes in areas or metropolitan areas such as Austin, Dallas, and Tulsa. Uh, decreasing our headways will lead to improved commute times for our ridership. And also it'll be the efficient use of our assets and appropriate use of our, uh, our vehicles as we're looking to accommodate with the, uh, introduction of a new fleet onto our, uh, onto our system. We want to make sure that we're using those, those vehicles appropriately. So with this strategy and with other complimentary solutions, we urge city council to consider this, uh, this solution to greatly improve our public transit and, uh, and our service to our citizens and guests in our city. Thank you for considering my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. Uh, next, Jesse Mendoza, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Jesse Mendoza, 480196th Street. I'm currently the chair of the public transit here in, here in Lubbock. I, I started serving, Chris didn't know this, uh, but I, I was a member of, I was a citizen here, a kid using the public transportation system in Lubbock 20 years ago. The routes are the same. The community has changed and we still have the same plan. So I'm here to advocate from the heart to tell you, uh, thank you for listening. Uh, thank you for the questions that you all have. I know there's a redesign here and there's some efficiencies here that we can take advantage of. We've worked really hard, as Jason has said, uh, in engaging the community and hearing their feedback. And I know it's a balance, right? There's a budget, there's City Bus, there's a, there's a community of city and we have to figure out how to balance and bring all those together in a synergy. So, uh, I advocate for this plan. You know, I know we talked about a five-year plan and there's different phases, but certainly, uh, there, there needs to be some change. And so I thank you for listening to our comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza. Uh, Robin Rainey, if you'll come forward now, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Robin Rainey, president and CEO of Goodwill Industries of Northwest Texas. Goodwill recognizes a tremendous impact that City Bus has on our own Goodwill employees. We have 275 employees within our region, many of whom live within ALIS. United Way has done a tremendous job of helping all of us understand that forty-nine percent of Lubbock County lives within ALIS. That's asset limited, income constrained, employed. Our Goodwill Document Destruction Business employs predominantly individuals with special needs and they are totally dependent upon City Bus. And they have been served well as the majority of these employees utilize the City Bus Access App. Public access to all Goodwill locations are carefully considered with nearby access to a bus stop, including our Career Resource Center. When we moved into our current Career Resource Center two years ago at 6520 University, we reached out to Chris and his team to evaluate the bus route because we wanted to be highly accessible. Chris and his senior leaders hopped on a bus, rode that bus route, and made a change so that it stops directly in front of our building where we served over 1,100 people last year in improving their job skills and increasing their employability. We're very grateful that City Bus advertises at no charge the Career Resource Center on every bus and allows us to change that advertisement quarterly. Our newest location is on North MLK and it is strategically located with a bus stop on that property. We provide at the expense of Goodwill bus passes to potential clients who would like to work with us on their job search and in gaining, graining, gaining job skills and provide bus passes to our clients at no charge to them. We were so pleased to partner with Chris and his team to consider what free training we might offer to them. And the most recent training that we've offered was to City Bus drivers on de-escalation techniques. So we enthusiastically support City Bus and the implementation of an updated plan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, that concludes our time for, uh, public comment. Now I'm going to call the city council, uh, meeting to order. And to begin with, we will take up item 5.1 on our agenda, the minutes from our regular city council meeting for October 8th. We got a motion, got a second. Any discussion, any changes? If I hear none, all in favor, please let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none, the motion, uh, is approved. All right. We're now going to take up item six on our, uh, the consent agenda. Item 6.13, which does deal with the, um, uh, City Bus, uh, issue, has been pulled from the consent agenda and, uh, that's the only pull we had. So I will certainly entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda we have today with the exception of item 6.13. Is there a motion? I hear a motion and a second. Any discussion? I see none, all in favor of the approving the consent agenda with the exception of item 6.13? Please let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none, so the motion passes unanimously. Okay, let's take up item 6.13. Uh, we've already had a staff briefing. I don't know if we need a additional briefing on it, but Mr. Mandrell, you will be present if you, we have any questions, uh, during this time. So, um, I will entertain a motion to approve item 6.13. We have a second from Mr. Collins. All right. Okay, so let's take up the discussion of that item. Uh, Mr. Gashin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to start by saying thank you for the work that y'all have done on this plan. I think it's a really good start and I'm glad that y'all are, are doing the work to evaluate the, the needs of citizens versus the service that we're currently providing. My, my criticism of the plan as proposed though is that it's providing unequal service, uh, to citizens across the city. So, you know, for example, somebody who lives on the east side of Avenue Q is not going to be able to have access to the same level of services who lives just on the opposite side on the west of Avenue Q. Same with somebody who lives at 50th and Indiana, they could access the microtransit zone. Somebody who lives at 50th and Quaker doesn't. And, um, I think it's especially concerning for people who may not qualify for paratransit, for example, but they still need the mobility or the, the transportation assistance that City Bus provides. And these sorts of government-funded programs are often, you know, justified on egalitarian principles, but I, I don't think that it's particularly egalitarian to, to cut out sections of the city that are not going to receive the same level of services, especially when we consider that everyone's paying for these services to support City Bus and, and they're not, and they're not going to have access to the same level of services as, as their neighbor. I also have a concern about if we're painting ourselves into a corner with the budget commitment. If we're looking at an additional $500,000 to $600,000, it's easy to say that we're going to expand City Bus's budget right now, but we faced very difficult decisions with less money earlier this year. And I think that we would be doing City Bus and the citizens who rely on it a real disservice to greenlight a plan today that expands and changes service without having some real thought about what are the financial implications? How are we going to make the ends meet on this? You get halfway through a project and then we had, don't have the budget commitment to support the implementation of the project. I think that would, that would be a worst-case scenario than taking the time to think about it on this end. So, like I said, I think this is a really good start. I think it needs a little bit more time in the oven, uh, work out a few of these implementation thoughts and, uh, service coverage and budget considerations. So my recommendation would be possibly that we either disapprove this, uh, agenda item today and allow more time to work on it, or postpone it to a date certain.
To make that in the form of a motion, or do you want to hold a motion on that for further discussion? What do you wish to do at this time? Okay, thank you. All right. Ms. Martinez Garcia.
Thank you again for a great presentation. One of the things, um, I think I was a part of your survey and getting to do that experience. So that was an eye-opener for me. How long has this particular, um, study, how long has it been done? It's been a few years going, right?
So, so the current study, we started, um, on this current study in January of 2023. And it culminated in February of 2020, or this past February when we took it to our board for, um, their consideration and approval then. But we've been working with parent peers on various studies beginning back in 2018, 19. And so, um, that study within, we were scheduled to be in public, uh, public comment and public, um, sessions in March of 2020 when, when everything shut down. So we kind of had to pivot. So we've been working on things since about 2018, 2019 to get us to this point.
But we have had some public comments over the years on how the process was or the, the design was being done and whatnot. And we were always able to, to work. I think you personally met with some folks to try to adjust and make sure that it fit the needs of, of those that were needing the services. Is that, isn't that correct? I, I mean, it's been a little while since that happened, but I just want to make sure that I'm thinking on the same lines.
Yes, ma'am. So every, every, we've, we've done, um, I think this last, um, this, this, the current study we did probably eight to 10, um, various places in the community where we went up and set up and libraries and different, different functions to, to receive public comment on these. Uh, we had a survey that we, we blasted out, um, the all methods we had. And so we've been through every study we've done, we've been, every, everything we've done, we've gone out and done public input, public involvement sessions to try to get, get, gather as much feedback as we can from the community.
Did you have a real significant amount of resistance from, you know, all of the public input? Did you have?
No, I mean, it was all very positive for the most part, um, just simply because there's a lot of opportunity for people to connect and to, to places in this community where today they cannot get to. And so for the, the predominant thing was, is a very positive. There are people that are going to be affected, um, just because if we move a route, you know, it's going to go from maybe one block away from them to maybe two or three blocks away. So it does have that impact. And there was, you know, maybe a little bit of grumming about that, but they still have access to it. And they see, they, they can get, with the plan, they can get places quicker, um, but, and more places in our community.
I saw the 30-minute and I appreciate that, especially when you're trying to get to work from one area to another. In rolling out and disseminating information, what's your plan for those that will be inconvenienced by a block or a few blocks?
Yeah, so as we get into implementation, um, we will, uh, so one of the big things that we're going to have is, and we partner with Dallas Area Rapid Transit, they did a big network redesign a couple of years ago. And they have, they have a tool that they've built that allows folks to go to a website or somewhere where they can see current services and they can trip plan currently. But then on top of a button, it'll allow them to trip plan that same trip with the new service level. So our, we've already had discussions with them about bringing that here and, and, and putting our services into that. So citizens can quickly go to a, to a computer and look at that. And then we'll also be in, uh, you know, the plan will be to be out in the community and have those, more events where people can come to us and we can talk about exactly how to do that.
And pardon my naivety, but you're not shutting off one section of town and just, you're still going to have connections. Is that right?
Correct.
I mean, that, I mean, people will still be able to access and you're just making it a little bit more user-friendly in the immediate area, but they'll still have opportunities to connect from one place to another. So it's not like we're shutting out any particular part of town or we're just making it a little bit more convenient for your daily use.
That's correct, yeah. And, and I think, you know, the, the zones that we have set up and even some of the routes, as mentioned about the La Prino project, you know, we, we have this plan, but we understand that there's, you know, changes in the community. So our goal is to get, you know, something implemented, um, by this, hopefully maybe this time next year. And then we begin gathering the data and the input from the community, be out in the community, listening to what folks are saying. And then we can make adjustments, um, to the routes, to the zones that better suit what the community is, is, is saying, once we get the rubber on the road.
So we're not closed to recommendations, suggestions? We're just building, and, and I, it's a five-year plan, right?
Correct.
So we have time and as the city continues to grow, which we've seen, and where we, you know, based on the United Way findings with ALIS, you know, people don't think that you're providing services to those zip codes, but it's growing. And so there's definitely a lot of opportunity here. So I appreciate what you guys have done. And, and like I said, I know, I think Dr. Wilson and I got to do that, that individual meeting with you. So, um, I appreciate your time. Thank you for being here.
Dr. Wilson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mandrell, for being here today. Um, I just, from the financial standpoint, will you clarify? So we're thinking it's an additional 500,000 to 600,000 per year? I, I just want to make sure I'm clear on what the financial ask would be moving forward, what it would look like. Is it, I know you're very aware, we had a very contentious budget cycle this last season. And so, you know, I want to make that very clear, what the money part looks like. Was this additional funding already anticipated in this last budget? Because I know City Bu, City Bus's budget did increase as well in this last budget. I'm just trying to figure out where's the money coming from? I know you guys get money and funding from different buckets as well. It's not all just from, from the general fund. And so walk me through a little bit of the financial piece of this, just so I'm clear.
Sure, I'll, I'll take a stab at this and if I need to, you know, bring Jason back up to do, to answer any, anything I missed up. So the, the 500,000, 600,000, that's going to be at year five, um, once we, so that's, um, pushed out. And of course, we're going to have more budget hearings and things every year to get us to that point. So this plan essentially is laid out a plan for us to come back to you all and ask for whatever it is to take that next step. But there's nothing hard and fast in the plan that says we, we must do this. The, the services that what we're going to, um, implement initially is going to be basically as much budget neutral as we possibly can be, given the cost increases that we've seen over the years. So we have, uh, we're working- can be, given the cost increases that we've seen over the years. So we have, we'll continue to work with Jason and his team to figure out what the best service on the street is to meet today's budget come the end of the implementation, approximately 12 months from now. And then we will have, you know, every year, we'll have that as a roadmap to be able to then become, come to you guys and ask for that additional funding, and then let that go where that may be. Hope that answers your question.
It does. My next question is, they talked a little bit about fares, you know, for trips. When was the last time the fare schedule was changed, increased over the, I mean, how often is that looked at and then increased is needed to help try to cover some of the costs that increasing with just inflation in general and, you know, cost of equipment and everything like that?
Sure. So we, I think the last time an actual fare increase was done for City Bus was back, I think it was, you know, somewhere between 2009, 10, 11-ish timeframe. And then that fare stayed intact through to 2020. When the pandemic occurred, you know, transit agencies nationwide stopped taking fares just because to limit the interaction between the driver and the passengers. So we went fare-free for six months, and then, but at the same time, we reduced our service to meet the, you know, the less demand on the street and the less movement. And then about six or seven months, I think it was the end of 2020, we reinstituted fares, but we did it at a lower rate. So that's why pre-COVID, our daily pass is $1.75 or $3.54 an all-day pass. Today, it's $1 for a single trip or $2 for an all-day pass. And that's what we've been kind of running off of since then, since we've been still been running a little bit lower service. But in the plan that they're creating, that there will be a different fare structure in place by the time the implementation of the plan in any facet occurs.
Yeah, I mean, and I think that's what I would encourage, is to help offset some of that cost. You know, I don't think we want to see fares so increased that we lose customers and that it's not reasonable. But I do think if you're looking to, you know, increase budget, expand, you know, that's something that we have to look for. Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but part of this redesign was an attempt to reduce the on-demand part of it, which is the most expensive part of it.
Correct.
Okay. And if you, to Mr. Gashin's question about how did we design the microtransit zones, what kind of, was it data-driven? I remember, I think, attending the meeting where you first presented this program, and I think I understood the concept, but if you would go through that, again, as to how you designed those microtransits to integrate with the fixed, not fixed zones, but fixed lines, could you just discuss that, please?
Yeah, I'll let Jason take that.
Okay.
Sure. Happy to do that. The approach there was to use a couple of different data sets. One is demographic data. And so, you know, we know nationally and certainly here in Lubbock, there are, there's higher propensity to take transit among certain demographic groups, whether that's, you know, by income, age, mobility. So we combined all those into a propensity index to look at where those areas exist where the highest demand for transit is. So that's one piece of the puzzle. The other piece that we used within this study was big data, utilizing cell phone data, anonymized cell phone data that we're able to purchase, we're able to draw customized zones, and understand travel within Lubbock using more recent data post-COVID to really see how travel patterns have changed, how they've evolved, and try and match up the design of not just the fixed route, but the microtransit zones to reflect those changes that we saw in the data. That's really a proxy for broader travel patterns. That piece of data, the big data from cell phones, obviously doesn't get us the demographics, so we kind of have to marry those two data sets. The last piece is public input, and trying to understand, you know, where people are telling us they need service. One more piece to add on to that would be just the data we get from City Bus to understand where they're performing well and where they're not performing so well relative to the ridership data that they collect.
Just to be clear about, I think you said you could take any two points within a microzone, but you can also take within a microzone to a fixed route.
Correct.
To any fixed route.
To make any, yeah, to make any connection.
All right. So that's your ability to connect to other areas. Okay, that's the way I understood it. Okay. Mr. Collins?
Well, I feel like that Mr. Gashin has made some very good points about, you know, maybe some of the missing components in the plan. I also think that we all recognize that a revision is necessary, and so I commend you for starting, you know, through that process. We will get back to the budget conversations about City Bus in nine to 10 months. I think I understand that your implementation is scheduled for eight to 12 months. And so I guess I would suggest that we try to move forward with you guys getting started, and then be able to come back to us in July perhaps, and give us a synopsis of where you think you are. Can you expand these microzones as maybe as necessary? What do your fixed routes look like? We talked about a need for a new fixed route out to La Prino, or let's see how this evolves in a year, or in this implementation phase, and let you come back and explain to us what the implications are. We may have to say, well, we can't do this, or, hey, let's do this and that. But if we sit here today without action, we have no action. And I think action is absolutely necessary at this point for you guys. So that would be my comment and suggestion for the group, is that we allow them to go about their work, make the changes needed, and then come back and tell us how they're going to work. So thank you, Chris. Mayor.
All right. See no further discussion, any other further discussion on this matter? All right, we have a motion and a second. I will now call for the vote on this resolution. All in favor, please let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I know the vote was six to one. The vote passes. All right. Thank you.
It's five to one, Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Harris is not here. See, these people always are counting for me and everything. So five to one. Please let the record note, five to one. And for those of you who wonder who Mr. Harris is, he's still recuperating. So keep him in your prayers. It's a tough road. Anybody's had that kind of surgery before, so please keep him in your prayers. Hopefully, he'll be back with us soon. All right. So now let's take up our regular agenda. I will start with Agenda Item Number 7.1, and we're going to consider a resolution casting the City Council's votes for candidates to the Lubbock City Appraisal District Board of Directors. And for those of you who don't understand what in the world that means, we're going to call on the City Secretary to explain that to us and provide a staff briefing on this item. So Ms. Paz?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Back in September, y'all nominated current board members to be reappointed. Sunny Garza, Brady Goan, Greg Jones, Bobby McQueen, and Noe Reynolds. They are in the process of staggering their terms, and today, y'all get to cast your 1,178 votes, how you see fit, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? And this is something new that we are doing here, the positions.
For y'all currently, yes. A lot of you all have not been through this process, but this is a routine process that typically happens every other year or so.
All right. All right. Are there any other questions anybody has? Well, I'll entertain a motion now. If there are no further questions, to approve the resolution casting the City of Lubbock's 1,178 votes for positions on the Lubbock Central Appraisal District Board of Directors.
I move to cast the City of Lubbock's 1,178 votes for the five candidates as follows, thereby distributing votes as evenly as possible. Sunny Garza, 236 votes. Brady Goan, 236 votes. Greg Jones, 236 votes. Bobby McQueen, 235 votes. Noe Reynolds, 235 votes.
Hear a motion and a second, any discussion? I see none. All in favor, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving along. Our City Council will now conduct a public hearing to receive input concerning the participation of the City of Lubbock in the Texas Enterprise Zone Program, which we are going to be nominating United Supermarkets LLC, which is located at 5801 Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard in Lubbock, Texas, to be considered for a state-designated enterprise zone. As a reminder, this purpose of this public hearing is to hear from members of the public regarding this agenda item. And while the council may ask questions during the public hearing, the council will not discuss the merits of the agenda item during the public hearing. So I'll now open the public hearing for Agenda Item 7.2 at 3:10 PM, and I'm going to call on our city, Deputy City Manager, Mr. Bill Howerton, to come forward and provide our staff briefing.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. You stole my thunder. I think you said everything that I'm about to say, so.
Let's take a vote.
We're going to hold a public hearing for Texas Enterprise Zone nomination. You said it was for the distribution center for United out on 5801 MLK. I wanted to make some real brief points about what the program is and does. I wanted, the first one I wanted to make was, this is a state sales and use tax refund program. This does not affect the local taxing entities whatsoever. So this is only with the state. To participate in this, the business must meet minimum investment requirements, and you'll see in a minute that United has done that and is willing to do that. When they do that, they also need to employ a certain percentage of people that are either economically disadvantaged or live in the enterprise zone, I'm getting my two programs mixed up, or they're veterans. And in order to actually nominate, because what we're doing today is nominating them for an application to see if they can get this program, we have to pass a nomination ordinance, which will be Item 7.3. And I wanted to give you just real brief information on that one. You see a list of the potential possible incentives? These are available incentives. These are not items that, by taking this action, that you will be requiring the city to provide. It's simply a list that will allow them to better their grading process through the state application process. Just drawing attention to the first and the last bullet, the first one states that the city is in compliance with Chapter 2023 of the Texas Government Code. And really, all that means is that we, there is a set state designation or the activity that they have to follow, excuse me, and the city is in compliance with that. The next one, the last one there, again, it said 35% rule that since they're not located within the enterprise zone, that they have to hire 35% of the new hires from the current boundaries of the enterprise zone. Sorry. $5 million. That translates to 10 newly created jobs and 490 retained jobs for an annual payroll amount of $32 million. Our next step is to hold a public hearing. After that, we will consider the first read of the ordinance for the nomination ordinance, and happy to answer any questions that you might have so far.
At this point, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Howerton? All right. Thank you, Mr. Howerton.
Yes, sir.
I'll now open the public hearing on Item 7.2. Is there anyone present today wishing to speak to this item in favor of it? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of it, please come forward. Is there anyone present today wishing to speak in opposition to this matter? Since there is no one coming forward to speak in opposition or in favor, I'll now close the public hearing on Item 7.2 at 3:15 PM. So now we're going to take up Item 7.3. I think we've already received the staff briefing, but let me just go ahead, and we'll take a motion in a second, and after that, we can have any further discussion if we need to. Do I have a motion on Item 7.3? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? I just wish to make clear what Mr. Howerton made clear as well, that this does not involve city money or taxpayer money. This is money that is committed by the state through the sales tax that the state collects. So it's a program that's available to all, to entities all across the state, which our local entity, United Supermarkets, is wishing to take advantage of. And all the city is doing is nominating them for this process, which is required. The nomination is required, and we have to state that we fulfill certain requirements as a city for them to be available to take advantage of it. But no city funds are being used for this program. So we have a motion and a second, no further discussion. All in favor of Item 7.3, please let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Hear none? Passes 6-0. All right. Now we get to Item 7.4, my favorite item of the day. I'm going to call on our City Manager, Mr. Atkinson, to brief us on this item.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Mayor, if I might, I'd ask you to switch the inputs, and we'll put one visual up as we kind of run through this item. There we go. Thank you. Counsel, the item before you is a purchase contract for approximately 1,471 acres that are needed for Lake Seven. The map on the wall, the shaded areas, show you the future Lake Seven. The yellow boundaries show you the 1,471 acres included in this purchase. Counsel, many of you saw this item previously in the form of a binding term sheet that was approved on May the 14th, 2024. The contract that you have today is to implement that term sheet. I think one good item of note, this purchase does include all of the various estates associated with the land, so the surface, the minerals related. We do have a closing date of on or before February 14th, 2025, and this single purchase represents approximately 85% of the non-city-owned land that needs to be acquired to support Lake Seven. Counsel, you've taken action twice on the funding for this contract, once in your current budget, the budget that started October 1st, and then following that in your items establishing the parameters for the issuance of water revenue bonds, and of course, we will also be applying ARPA dollars. The purchase price is $15.1 million. I'll speak for a moment about Lake Seven itself. Lake Seven, as you well know, is the next water supply, and it is the key project in front of us today for the Strategic Water Supply Plan, or what we call the 100-year plan. Construction and ultimate delivery of water from Lake Seven does require two different permits. You do have in your hands the final state water rights permit, and that was issued in its final form in May of this year. We are in the pre-application phase for the federal permit, what you'll hear as commonly called the 404 permit. That is through the United States Army Corps of Engineers. We did not move extremely quick on purpose. There were a couple of things going on this year that we thought would be to our favor, not the least of which is this item. We do intend to have that submitted in its final form in early 2025. The goal is to have this dam completed, water in the lake, and ready to pump out in 2032. Lake Seven, in terms of lakes, is very unique in that it will be as close as possible to a perpetual water supply. And then how does that happen? water supply. And then how does that happen? There are guaranteed daily inflows into this lake each and every day, and those inflows will grow as Lubbock grows. This also incorporates the developed stormwater flows. So think back to the early 2000s, large amounts of money spent in Lubbock to alleviate flooding and to channel those stormwater flows into the canyon lakes, for which the city secured water rap permits, which now will assist in filling Lake Seven. So you'll have those developed stormwater flows, the stream quality effluent, a project that wasn't known when this started, but is a bonus if you wish, is the return flows that will come from the La Prino operation. So remember that La Prino will take roughly 1.3 million gallons of water a day into that plant, and they will send back to us over 2 million gallons a day. Taken together, that's where we get to saying this is just about as close to a perpetual supply as you can get. Council, this is a long-term project. The first permit application for the state water rap permit was made in 2007. You received that final version in May of 2024. Today is obviously a key and a major step in the project. Certainly encourage your favorable consideration. As I close, just on a side note, still related to water, Lake Allen Henry, as of yesterday morning, was 100% full with water going over the spillway again. That's the second time this year. So city of Lubbock's water supply projects have worked, and they are what will carry us into the future. With that, mayor, I'll take any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Atkinson? This has been a long process, and we've got to be thankful to people who came before any of us were up here for thinking out into the future. And also just for how we've integrated all the different kinds of things we have to do of a city to make sure that we take care of our stormwater, but also are now using that to help prepare us for having a perpetual lake, perpetual supply, constant level, lake pretty much, pretty close to being constant level, as close as about as you can get for a lake of this size. It's been an amazing project. And for all the citizens who, and I know a lot of people do talk about the debt the city has, but I just ask those people to consider how much of our debt is composed of providing for our water needs for this city. Without water, this city does not exist, or as I heard someone say today, we'd be Tohoka. And that's not a knock on Tohoka at all. But Lubbock could not exist as the city that we all enjoy it to be without the fact that people before us, and we today are trying to prepare for water for the city for the future. And if you don't know it, our city has a rolling 100-year water plan. So we are looking way out into the future, 100 years, to make sure that we are providing water. And this lake is another leg on that stool that will support that growth for the city in the future. So I want to commend not just our present staff, but, you know, shout out to all those people who preceded us for thinking that far into the future and for, this is, like I said, a great day to be at this point. And I will be so happy to sign that contract when it comes before me. So with that, any other questions, any other comments? I know we all feel the same way. All right. Well, then I will take a vote. All in favor? I have taken the motion, haven't I? We have the motion? Yes. We don't have a motion yet? No motion yet. Okay. Any motion then? All right. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor? Please let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. All right. Thank you. That passed unanimously, having exhausted all items on agenda today. This meeting is adjourned. Please turn off your microphones.